Let's go ahead and get this meeting started. Call the meeting to order. Stacia, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Dale Householder.
President.
Jason Gillespie.
I'm here.
Carl Doughty.
Hello.
Bill Miner. Okay, Alderman Miner had sent us a note a little bit earlier. He's having some issues with storm outages and might not have availability. So, he gave us the heads up. All right, let's proceed down our agenda. Any conflict of interest that anyone may note in any of the agenda items tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to draw attention to the council that since moving to Hill City about eight years ago, my wife and I have been extremely involved in this community. I have served on the senior center board for the last six years, president of the senior center board. I'm director of the Hill City Food Pantry. I serve on the EDC Board of Directors. We're members of the Hill City Arts Council, actively involved. We're members of the Friends of the Library, volunteer there. We serve in the beauti-- I serve on the beautification committee for Hill City, which is an agenda item tonight. I serve on the Pennington County Commission on Aging. We volunteer at the Film Festival. So, I'm involved in a community. I care deeply about this community. I do not have any financial involvement, other than a house that we own, but I do want to declare that I am very active in this community and support Hill City as a community. So, if it involves voting on some things that the council feels that I have a conflict on, I will be glad to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you very much, Alderman Householder. I will be speaking a little bit more in depth on that in the mayor report out, but just to answer this, as you've brought it up at this point in the meeting, I do have some information from our attorneys relative to conflicts of interest and how it's been defined. South Dakota codified law 6-1-17 is mainly referencing conflicts of interest. What we're dealing with, our conflicts of interest are another consideration when you serve as a councilperson. State statute governs the general conflict of interest standard for city officials as following. No county, municipal, or school official may participate in discussing or vote on any issue in which the official has a conflict of interest. Each official shall decide if any potential conflict of interest requires such official to be disqualified from participating in discussion or voting. However, no such official may participate in discussing or voting on an issue if the following circumstances apply. The official has a direct pecuniary interest in the matter before the governing body, or at least two-thirds of the governing body votes that an official has an identifiable conflict of interest that should prohibit such official from voting on a specific matter. If an official with a direct pecuniary interest participates in discussion or votes on a matter before the governing body, the legal sole remedy is to invalidate that official's vote. South Dakota codified law 6-1-17 statute further outlines specific examples of conflicts and non-conflicts. For example, a councilperson may not also hold another office within the city, an example of city finance officer, city attorney, or the like. South Dakota codified law 9-14-6, a councilperson is not disqualified from serving simply because they or their spouse hold a liquor license, but that person cannot vote on the issuance or transfer of any such license. Similarly, a councilperson may serve in a volunteer, unsalary municipal position, which provides any service to the community so long as that position does not pay in excess of $5,000 per calendar year. So, I reference those two as you have given us some basis relative to the involvement that you have in other organizations. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to direct it to the remaining members of council that create our quorum to get information or some-- their opinion relative to a potential conflict of interest. I'll start with Alderman Gillespie. Alderman Gillespie, I will put this to you. As per South Dakota codified law, if the remaining council agrees that there is a conflict of interest, we will require councilman Householder to recuse himself from these. He's explained his situation.
I don't see any of those that you get money from or anything like that. And I guess, based on my experience, you've been impartial in passing information, not pushing things one way or the other. And so, I don't see a concern with what you mentioned and what's on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Doughty.
Yeah, I do not see any issues. We're a small community. We're all very active in different groups. And I do feel that Mr. Householder is very fair when it comes to making decisions. So, I do not see any issues or conflicts.
Okay, thank you very much, Alderman Doughty. Alderman Householder, you had indicated when you explained this to us that you do not receive any pay or compensation for this. And these are public offices that you hold for the betterment of the city. As you don't qualify for either one of those, I believe the council has spoken. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Approval of 810-2020 Agenda, approval of 727-2020 Meeting Minutes, and approval of Claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Alderman Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doughty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Dale Householder.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Carl Doughty.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Members of the public may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. And we ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes per speaker. Please use our podium and identify yourself if you'd like to speak directly to the council. Okay.
There was something brought up here a few meetings ago that they were going to do an evaluation of the roads. And I have not heard anything about that.
Okay, this is not a question and answer section in the meeting. So, I believe there has been some information relative to that, which we will address later in the meeting as well. Anyone else? Okay. Absolutely, come on up.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to come introduce myself to members of the community today. I am the new music teacher in town, the kindergarten through 12th grade music teacher. And I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Sylvia Larson. I go by Sylvie. I'm originally from the Harrisburg area. I graduate-- I just graduated from SDSU with my music degree. I'm very excited to be in Hill City. I've moved into a beautiful little place in town. And if anyone has any questions about the music program or about potentially assisting the music program this year, I would welcome the opportunity to meet you. Thank you.
Sylvia, thank you very much for coming to speak to the council.
Thank you.
We hope you enjoy Hill City as much as we all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. What I would like to do before we get into action items is I know that we have Sergeant Harkins on the phone for the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, and he has a report. I would like to move him up right now for his report out as we understand that he is busy with the rest of the deputies that he has under his wing, making sure that we're comfortable and safe in Hill City. So, Sergeant Harkins, what have you got for us?
Hello, hey, hello, everybody. So, in the July report, it looks like we had four arrests. Three of those were warrant arrests. The other arrests were the DUI arrest. We did have a few assaults in town, and we're still working those. So, that's that number, four there in the assaults. Those are still being investigated. As far as the rally, the rally's been good so far. Obviously, there's a lot of people. And we have a lot of extra bodies in town to help with those extra people. So, are there any questions regarding the July report or anything going off the rally?
Counsel?
Looks good, good coverage.
Sergeant Harkins, I'd like to thank you for the service that you and the rest of your team provides for Hill City. I was recently in another town not too far from here, and there was some nefarious activity going on. Unfortunately, we do not have the same rules and laws that other states do. And people don't understand that when they cross the border. But I can tell you that I realize that if it would have happened in our city, you guys would have been right on top of it because every time I turn a corner, I see one of your team. So, thank you very much for the service that you provide for us.
Thank you very much. We're doing the best we can for the community. So, y'all have a great night.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on into action items. We have several action items on the agenda, and I want to make sure that we keep this moving. So, I just want to remind everyone, from a housekeeping perspective, how we will be utilizing Robert's Rules of Order as we run through the meeting. The action item will be read by myself, and then it will be introduced in detail by either Stacia or Brett or another member of the staff as necessary. They will provide some additional direction and information on it. After that, we will open it up for public comment and opinion. This is the time where anyone in the audience can speak directly to the council with whatever they need. Once that ends, I will close public comment and open it up for deliberation and debate amongst the council. We will not be opening it up for additional public comments. So, please understand what the situation is and be prepared to use your three minutes if you choose to do so during our public comment session. Let's go ahead and move on into action item 7A. Approval of conditional use permit to allow for a nightly rental hearing, 352 Pine Mountain Avenue, C. number 2020-06, Hill City Investments LLC. And I believe we have Ms. Danny Shade that'll be giving us an overview. Thank you.
This conditional use permit application hearing is to allow for vacation rental use of a property within a residential two-zone. Conditional use permits for vacation rentals are required in this zone. Conditional use permit C. 2018-04 for this property was approved with conditions by city council on July 9th of 2018. The conditions imposed on this approval were three off-street parking spaces to be provided for this requested use. On July 30th of 2019, the conditional use permit was revoked as the use had not been established nor had the conditions imposed with the approval been met. The owner initially believed renovations needed would not require a building permit when he purchased the property in 2018. In October of 2019, a building permit application, B. 2019-22, was presented to planning and zoning as the structure needed new electrical, plumbing, new structural support beams, new concrete footings, and the owner wanted to put in additional windows. The building permit was approved on October 20th of 2019. From October 24th, 2019 to current, there have been over 21 inspections by city staff, and the project is getting close to completion. The owner is reapplying for a conditional use permit so he can be ready to rent out the property as quickly as possible after completion. The proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. The proposed conditional use generally meets the standards as set forth in Title IX. There's no flood hazard area on this property. Surrounding properties with conditional use permits that allow for vacation rental use are located at 202 Pine Mountain Avenue and has been established since 2007. 517 Pine Mountain Avenue, and that was established in 2019. Initially, the renovation was to expand bedrooms from two to three, which is why originally the commission and council required three off-street parking spaces. The renovation, however, resulted in two bedrooms. Therefore, staff is recommending only two off-street parking spaces be required. There's work that still needs to be done prior to final inspections, however. Staff believes this can be accomplished in the timeframe allowed to satisfy the establishment of the requested conditional use. At this point, occupancy permit has not been issued by the city of Hill City yet. Planning and zoning commission has reviewed the conditional use permit application, recommends their approval to city council with the following conditions. One, the owner continues contacting city and state officials for inspections as required by law. Two, occupancy permit from the city of Hill City is required before any residential or vacation rental usage. Three, the required number of off-street parking spaces per Hill City Municipal Code be provided. In this case, it would be two. And then, four, owner must obtain South Dakota Department of Health approval for vacation nightly rental within three months of date of occupancy permit. Mayor, there has been no comments, no negative comments received from the public. There's been one call that had a question in regards to the off-street parking. I provided that answer, and the resident was fine.
Okay, all right, thank you, Miss Shade. I'll go ahead now and open it up to public comment. If anybody would like to come up and discuss or direct the councilmen with any additional information they have, please feel free to come up, state your name, and then go ahead and address us.
Hi, Ed Sumby, V69 Deegan Drive. I just have a question. Rental regulations, are they different than permanent? Are they different? If you have a rental place, are the rules and regulations different than if you have someone living there full-time? Because we had a rental place. We went through all the hoops. Parking, garbage, can't park on the road. I go all over the city. I see motorhomes parked. I see campers parked. Who does it apply to? Just rental people?
There's actually, through the state, there's a vacation home license that's obtained through the Department of Health, plus our variance, or not a variance, but our nightly rental process here, which you go through the process of explaining where your guests will park and trying to manage that and who's going to manage that. So, there is accountability. I guess for, you're talking about long-term rentals, like six-month, 12-month rentals.
I want to know if it is different for rental property or for residential.
There is not that same standard for long-term renting.
Meaning what?
I mean, there's still a requirement of parking per bedroom.
Two is required per single family.
Yeah, there's still formulas that require parking, but there's not, there's not in the code a requirement that they get mandated to be used. So, there's a higher accountability on nightly rentals as far as how they're managed and operating. So, there's still building codes that are, that are allowed, you know, associated to long-term renting. And there's still codes out there, but they're not as strict as nightly rental codes.
So, if you live here permanently, there's different rules than if you have a rental place?
There are, yeah, there are rules, there are rules for each use of it, essentially. So, yes, they are inherently different.
So, I guess that's my question.
Okay. Okay, any other? Okay, now I'm going to close public comment, and I will open it up to the council for their discussion and ruling. Counsel?
I guess I'm curious why the three-month hiatus of getting the health approval.
And it has a lot to do with the, with the state health inspectors. Once the applicant sends in the application, they don't get an appointment right away within a week of doing it. So, this gives those people time to get that state inspector physically out to that property. And other applications in other cities have that three-month. We've written it into ours that it has to be provided in three months.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the conditions set forth by the planning and zoning commission.
Motion, Alderman Householder. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
We'll both second.
Okay, second, Alderman Gillespie. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Carl Doughty.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Action item 7B. Approval of variance request to allow 20-foot rear yard setback for existing structure, 100 Main Street, V. number 2020-02 Peter Brothers LLC. Ms. Shade.
Okay, I'm going to give some background that isn't in the staff report just because it was initially confusing. There was a new structure that was put up on 108 Main Street. And the new structure, when we approached it, they did not have a building permit, and they were four and a half feet from the right-of-way in the front. So, to bring that building into compliance, we had the owner of the building come in. When the owner of the building came in, I said, "You've got another structure on the adjacent property of 100 Main Street that also is in this, the required setbacks in the rear yard, and you have had that for four years. Let's add that to that variance request so that we can bring both buildings into compliance."
Okay.
And save the fee, too.
Okay.
And we put them on one application to save the fee.
Adding them together was in an attempt to save the fee for the property owner.
Correct, because it's $150 for each variance request. So, planning and zoning, when they reviewed it, they kind of split it apart. So, this vote or this hearing is strictly on 100 Main Street, the rear building that has been out of compliance for four years. Okay, so, in 2016, and this is on that, that 100 Main Street building, in 2016, a 12-by-28-foot building was permitted for 100 Main Street with the condition by planning and zoning that the building must achieve the required 30-foot rear yard setbacks. The building was built and is encroaching 10 feet into the required 30-foot rear yard setbacks. Multiple contacts to the owner by the city over the years has not resulted in the building being moved into compliance. In 2020, an unpermitted building measuring 8-foot by 20-foot was erected on 108 Main Street. This building is in violation of the required 10-foot front yard setbacks and the 5-foot side yard setbacks. The building has precast footings, a roof system, four walls, and a floor. The applicant was notified that the building needed permitting and is in violation of the required setbacks. The applicant then applied for a building permit and a variance. When the applicant appeared at city hall, staff recommended that he also apply for a variance for the 2016 building in order to bring it into compliance since he's having trouble locating somebody to move it. So, here. So, this request is for a 20-foot rear yard setback for a structure built in 2016 located at 100 Main Street. The building is used for a small gift shop slash storage. When it was approved by planning and zoning on March 7th of 2016, the condition stated must achieve the required setbacks. Once the structure was placed, city inspector realized it was placed in violation of setbacks, notified the owner of the property as well as the applicant. Structure has not moved out of the required rear yard setback. Structure does meet the side yard setback requirements. Planning and zoning has determined this is a permanent structure, different from what was stated in the original building permit, which was removable but permanent on skids. 30-foot required rear yard setbacks for commercial properties is due to the need to have a loading and delivery area for product. Commission feels that 20-foot is acceptable for this particular business, and the commission is recommending their approval of a variance to the rear yard setback requirements for this structure. The proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. The proposed variance request application does not meet the standards as set forth in Title IX. Those standards are limitations on the use of the property due to physical, topographical, and geological features. Two, the grant of the variance will not grant any special privilege to the property owner. Three, the applicant can demonstrate that without a variance, there can be no reasonable use of the property. Four, the grant of the variance is not based solely on economic reasons. Five, the necessity for the variance was not created by the property owner. Six, the variance requested is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Seven, the grant of the variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare. And eight, the property subject to the variance request possesses one or more unique characteristics generally not applicable to similarly situated properties. There is flood hazard area on both properties. However, it's 500-year flood, and we do not regulate that. The reason staff felt that it does not meet the variance review criteria, generally if it meets the majority of it, then I will recommend to the planning and zoning commission that it does meet the majority. This does not meet the majority of the requirements. But because it hasn't moved in four years, the goal is to bring that property into compliance with city codes. And the way to do that is to grant the variance for the ten to eight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shade. I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Would anybody like to add any additional information at this time? And I'm going to ask that you please make sure that we focus on the property in question and that that's the gray building that's showing right now on the monitor.
So, I'm Jordan Dahl, the owner of Dahl's Jinx Art. And originally, when we did put it there, we, I was just following the alleyway curves like this. And I guess I didn't know exactly, but I did on the front. And that's why that is 30 feet on the back. I was just following the alleyway, which is my fault. But after you guys said that I should move it, I did try to get ahold of Dallas Adam Vanner to move it, and he just didn't have time. And then the ground was froze. And then, just didn't hear anything about it after that. And then, once it did get brought up, I'd like to get a variance for it, please.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
I'm Vic Alexander, the owner of the property. Kind of not really the owner of the property, but owner of the adjacent property that I helped set that in there. And Jordan's right, the way it was said in there, it fits the, the direction of the roads and stuff like that. It's set up, it was set, ended up on a perfectly flat spot right where it lit. It is still on skids. And I just had the question, maybe Danny can consider that. I, it, I don't know if it meet, if it changes, if it becomes permanent or if it's temporary. Because in temp, our original application was temporary. And it is temporary. It's still on skids. It's still in the same spot it hit when it was temporary several years ago. I don't know if it changes anything to make it permanent or temporary.
In our building codes, in our building codes, the temporary structure is up for 180 days maximum. So, it's past its temporary status.
So, what has to happen in 180 days?
It has to be removed. Otherwise, it's considered.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else?
I mean, I mean favor of the variance. I appreciate the council for the commission's consideration.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment now and turn it over to the council. Counsel, any discussions or questions? And you have the ability to ask Ms. Shade or the owner of the property as they're here tonight.
I guess I'm a little concerned that it could set a precedent that, well, if you don't comply with building codes and you wait long enough, well, they'll just grant you a variance to get into compliance. I realize the situations of this building, and I am fully in support of granting the variance, but I want to know, people will know going forward, that's not going to be a precedent that if you just ignore the building codes for four years that we're going to just grant you to get into compliance. I don't think that's something we want to set a precedent for. But I believe in this case it works.
Okay. Alderman Doughty, Alderman Gillespie?
Understand that it may not fit all the criteria listed in the title, but that's also part of, a little bit of what the variance is before, is for, is for unique circumstances or different circumstances. And it does kind of fit with the alley. And I guess I'm, I'm okay with it, too.
Okay.
Requesting that 10 feet on the backside of it.
Alderman Doughty?
I'm in favor for it. My, my only concern, too, is just that we have the building codes, the building permits, the setback regulations. And I just hate to see us kind of start to cater to everybody that do have projects like this, that have been there for a long time and have issues. So, I'm in favor of passing it. But definitely, I believe that we need to make people aware that we have these, these building codes and ordinances in effect that we need to start making sure they're followed with any new structures that are going up.
Okay, all right, thank you. No further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So, moved.
Motion to approve, Alderman Gillespie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doughty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Carl Doughty.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
Yep.
Well, in favor, motion carried. Action item 7C. Approval of charitable lottery, Hill City Arts Council, Mackenzie Swanson. I believe this is going to be Brett.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So, the Hill City Arts Council has submitted a request for a charitable lottery. They are going to be giving away a donated sewing machine. And that'll be during the event in September. And so, they'll sell the tickets and then draw it on September 13th at the middle school for that prize. And all the proceeds will go to the Arts Council. So, I would recommend approval.
Okay, any public comment? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Counsel discussion?
Worth the endeavor.
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Alder Mengeholder, second Alder Minglespie, any further conversation? Roll call vote, please, Stacia?
Dahl Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doby?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Action item seven D, approval of sound permit, 245 Main Street, Bumpin Buffalo Bar and Grill, Doug and Michelle Olson.
So, we issue these outdoor sound permits on an annualized basis. I know in the paperwork, they fill it out and say, hey, we want music for the rally and whatnot. Bumpin Buffalo has had the outdoor sound permit with us previously. I think they've had it every year for the past six, eight, ten years, something like that. And so, we've never had an issue with it, we've never had to respond from any complaints to the Bumpin Buffalo. Primarily is what it is, is that upper deck up on the third floor, if you will, of that building, where they do play some music, that's just canned music, and then every once in a while, they do have a person that comes up with an amplifier and a guitar and does a musical set or whatnot. So this is something that's been occurring for several years. She just now got her application in, and according to our ordinances, the city council needs to approve these. So I present it to you this evening for approval and recommend that it is approved.
Thank you, Mr. McMacan, any public comment? Hearing none, I'll close public comment, any council discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alder Minglespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alder Mengeholder, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doby?
Yes.
Dahl Householder?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries. Action item seven E, approval of beautification committee, trash can purchase, Main Street. A very long-awaited conversation. Ms. Shade?
All right, now that the new sidewalk, railings, bump-out pedestrian crossing and handicap ramps have been completed, the desire is to add new trash cans and benches for pedestrian use as well. A committee was formed consisting of the mayor, city administrator, Dahl Householder, who was on P and Z at the time, Travis Cutner, our public works director, Bob Lowery from the EDC, Stephanie Ware, who is a business owner, Randy Berger, business owner, and Mackenzie Swanson from the arts council, and then myself. First meeting was held on June 18th of 2020. The project area budget specifications on the trash cans and benches and the introduction of a railing art frame system were discussed. Project area was defined as the central business district in the adjacent Main Street facing blocks. City had already budgeted for trash cans in this year's budget, approximately twelve to thirteen thousand. Bob Lowery said he had commitments from businesses downtown for an additional amount to put towards the project. The railing art project would display metal photographic panels that would showcase historical photos of the buildings on Main Street, the potential of this eventually becoming an art block. Meeting number two took place on June 25th. Multiple examples of trash cans that meet the requirements were presented. The chosen trash can is a commercial zone, it's up on the screen, Polytech forty-two gallon waste container and dome lid set. Two cans were purchased, one in green and one in black, and have been on Main Street for the past several weeks. All committee members are pleased with the colors and the selection of this style of trash can. Bench placement at that meeting was defined, and we, and as we have very limited amount of sidewalk space on the west side in which to work with, the parameters of a workable bench were outlined. It was also agreed to purchase some cigarette receptacles to help eliminate the large amount of butts thrown on the city street. Meeting number three took place on June 16th. It was agreed that the green cans should be ordered for the parks and everywhere else, the black trash cans. The group agreed that we want to keep the trash can cost around six thousand dollars. The cigarette receptacles were discussed in more depth. The style that was selected is a black wall-mounted cigarette ash receptacle that will be mounted to the light poles. Bench design was narrowed down to four to five choices. The art railing project was updated. Artwork will be able to be changed out with the frame system idea that Randy and Mackenzie are designing. Many of the historical photos at City Hall can be duplicated on metal. Meeting number four took place on July 30th of 2020. The committee has agreed to send to council its recommendation to release approximately seven thousand dollars from the trash can budget for the purchase of thirty black and sixteen green trash containers and, that's not right.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-nine, thank you. Thirty-nine black and sixteen green trash containers and twelve cigarette receptacles. Quoted price from Webster Hunt is seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. If we join their plus membership at a cost of ninety-nine dollars per month, which you can cancel at any time, they say, we will, and we will pay forty-five dollars for shipping on this order, which reduces the amount of the attached quote to six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. If you add in the ninety-nine dollars for the month that we're going to be ordering, the total cost for the trash cans citywide, including the parks and the twelve cigarette receptacles will be six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
So, before I open this up for public comment, just for clarity's sake, there was money that was budgeted that has had previously been put on hold.
Last year.
That was.
It was budgeted in last year's budget.
For 2020. The total amount was somewhere in the twelve thousand, thirteen thousand dollar range. The ask today is for approximately sixty-nine, eighty-four and thirty-three cents, which is for the trash cans and the receptacles. Has there been conversation with regard to utilization of any other funds that were included in the budget last year?
They felt that the balance of those of that thirteen to fourteen thousand could then be put towards the benches.
Okay.
And it looks like the money that EDC is going to be able to raise could then be used for the art railing project.
Okay, so it's, it's the council, the council should have the expectation that there will be another discussion with regard to money for the benches, looking at that amount that was budgeted as well?
Yeah, probably not until probably the end of September. By the time we make a decision how many are needed, sizes, et cetera.
Okay, and I would personally like to thank the committee that participated in this. The one thing that I have consistently heard from everybody, every year, multiple times a year, is garbage cans, garbage cans, garbage cans. So this is a long overdue project, and I understand that everyone worked really hard on it, so thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment now. Any members of the public are invited to speak?
Vic Alexander, question, the numbers of those trash cans, are they from Main Street, clear from Shoe Brewster Drive all the way to the Dollar General? Or is that where the trash cans, the public trash cans are going?
So Danny, the placement of those cans?
Wherever there are currently public trash cans, it has been counted as being to be replaced with the newer version.
Okay, in those areas, and there's ten of them, then I'd like to be able to talk to the committee. I didn't know whether it was this whole, it's not really secret, but I just, there's a lot of places that I have a lot of trash cans out on and at the edge of public spaces that I take care of myself, because I thought it was nice to have nicer trash cans out there than the ones that Art put out there a number of years ago, and thank God to Art that he put them out there twenty-five, thirty years ago. But there are a number of places that, there are none by the car wash that I put those in, back into the car wash property. There's one at the bridge down there, but there's several places along Main Street, facing properties facing Main Street, that there are no trash cans or that are private trash cans that are out there that if I could find out and we can adjust the numbers to be able to make it complete from one end of Main Street to the other.
So the intent of this is to replace trash cans that sit on public property or right-of-way? So if you've got trash cans that sit at your business, I wouldn't really think that that would be considered as a trash can that sits on public.
I understand what you're saying, the only thing is, Art didn't think it was necessary. We didn't think it was necessary to put trash cans out there if on my private property from you to me, I already have one.
Okay.
And there's multiple ones like that, that we could have public, public trash cans on public property had I not had a bunch of them right close to you.
Well, I would expect a business like a car wash to have a trash can and not, I quite honestly don't think I've ever seen any.
And like, just like a restaurant or something, everybody has a trash can at their front door, or should have anyway.
Yeah.
Whether it's public or not, but that's what I'm getting at is that.
If you're looking to replace private trash cans with public trash cans, I'm not sure.
I'm not looking to replace anything, I'm looking to place.
Additional.
Public trash cans on public space that are going to take care of the ones that I don't, that I'm going to pick up. You see what I mean? In other words, I have trash cans out there right now, they're providing a need.
Correct.
Because there's no public trash cans there.
Okay.
And up until now, there hasn't been any public trash cans there. There, there hasn't been a need because I've provided that space. If we want to have trash cans throughout the community, from one end to the other, along Main Street, I think it's appropriate to look at placement of, you know, continuously up, for instance, right along the, right along the building on Main Street. There's, you know, several different places that there could be, you know, two, three, four, five more trash cans.
Right, I, I just hope that business owners don't get the idea that now that we have public trash cans, they can do away with their private trash cans.
Not now we have public trash cans, we've had public trash cans for a number of years. Now we're going to have some pretty ones. That's the only change, really.
Exactly. Well, change it, now you're bringing up.
Because the other ones weren't so pretty, some of us put trash cans out there a little bit more often and more than we needed because we wanted the trash, we wanted the people to put the trash in the cans.
Yeah.
There are places where there should be some more public trash cans on public spaces.
Okay, we'll ask Danny to go ahead and speak.
There were extras that are ordered from what we currently have, about, about ten of them are extra, and that would be up to public works director as to where he sees on public property that there's been trash piling that we need to put a can out. So that decision would, I'm assuming, would be on public works.
Okay.
Perfect, fair enough, thank you.
All right, any other public comment? I'll go ahead then and close public comment and open it up for council discussion. Now again, I just remind the council that these are funds that are being requested tonight that had previously been put on hold. We did not specifically change the budget because reasoning for the hold was to further understand any economic impacts we might have as a result of COVID. So the council's ability to be able to, in effect, change your mind and say, you know what, I'm okay with that expense, let's go ahead and take the hold off of it and utilize it if necessary, remains out there. So, council, discussion?
Can we, because of money there in the budget?
Yes.
And we're not gonna, it's not going to tap into the reserves or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And you already crushed my dreams on the other one, then we'd save a little money, so you guys are going to spend that other money anyway, so.
Well, Mayor, I mean, we looked at a lot of trash cans, there are a lot of trash cans out there, they're three, four, five hundred dollars per trash can. And I think the council decided we did not want that unique of a trash can to become known as a city with fancy trash cans. We have other things we want to be known for. So we elected to come up with a very durable plastic. If somebody hits it and kicks it, it'll bounce back, it's easy to empty the trash out of. So we were really proud, and they were the most economical ones, as a matter of fact, in a commercial venture. So I think the committee did a really good job, and they're staying well within the budget. And I think it goes clear back to the comprehensive plan, that was something that was mentioned in some of those meetings, that, gosh, these are the ugliest trash cans around, you know, the paint's chipping off, and they served their purpose, believe me. Those trash cans served their purpose, so it is time with new sidewalks and so forth to move forward.
Okay, Alder Mendoti?
I know, I've been trying to get permission the last two, three years with the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts to go around and repaint the trash cans just because of how hideous they were. So I'm, I'm excited to actually get new trash cans that are going to be really nice looking and respectable in town. I would like though to see, maybe get Travis or somebody to maybe get with some of the business owners that do have private trash cans out in kind of the public right-of-way, maybe just see where they're at and see what the thoughts are about trying to add some extra ones wrapping around town. I mean, I do know, I see a lot of people going down to Subway and calm and walking up the street, eating their sandwiches and stuff. So I, I do see there's probably a need for some down at that end of town, but like I said, just the question is where, because of putting them on public property versus private.
Exactly, okay.
You know, another thing, you know, if a private business owner would like to buy a trash can that matches the trash cans we're purchasing, I mean, that's an option, they can certainly do that.
They can do a matching, okay. Okay. All right, and any further discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead then and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, the request for trash cans, Alder Minglespie, second Alder Mendoti. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Carl Doby?
Yes.
Dahl Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carried. Before I go into our next action item, I see we've got another caller that has joined us on the line. Could you please identify yourself? A caller that has joined us, so far we have Alder Mendoti, there's another caller on the line. Okay, let's move on into action item seven F. Bid board projects, alley parking and play space improvements, public restrooms and senior center addition, authorization to proceed with bid process.
Before we get too far into this, I'd, unless I need to wait, I'd like to, for people to consider that we table this for thirty to forty-five days, give us an idea, a little better idea of what's going to come in, checking the revenue. I know that Bill's been watching it, and I went through things and, and see exactly where he's at and everything. And, well, both our numbers are right, there's a lot more to it, I dug into it some more compared to the other night when I was talking about it. And I guess I'd just like to see if there's consideration for that, and that way we would have some more revenue coming in and have a little better idea where we're at, because once we go to bid, I know we're not committed, but I don't want to leave contractors hanging out there or anything like that. And, you know, if I vote to go to bid, I, I want to continue. There's also other things that come into play with it, such as discussions about whether or not we want to split that project up.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to throw that out there real quick before we.
Before we, okay.
Got deep in the woods on it, and, so.
So hopefully everyone heard that. Alder Minglespie would like to table this for thirty to forty-five days to allow some additional revenue to come in, which I believe at that point, Stacia, we should have some good, solid information relative to our busy, our, you, our typically busy months. So she will have some more information on that. Okay, council, any other discussion on this?
Sounds like a prudent, prudent move to me.
Okay, all right. That being the case, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
It's disappointing, but I think we'll still get there, but I'll make the motion.
Motion to table?
For forty-five.
To for forty-five days. Alder Minglespie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second Alder Mendoti, any additional conversation? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dahl Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doby?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion has been tabled. Action item seven G, city maintenance of unaccepted right-of-way roads and utilities. So we had a question come up a little bit earlier with regard to a street assessment, and this and actually the conversation that we had at our last council meeting with regard to, we call it unaccepted road, however, it's Betty Matkins Court, are a direct result of the information that we're receiving in this street assessment survey. So Brett, can you go ahead and walk us through this?
Yeah, so the focus, the focus of this tonight is really to talk about city operational activities on certain streets. We did share the, the street assessment profile or results of that at the last meeting last week on Thursday, and I'm happy to share a copy of that with you, of anybody who would want one. But what it did was, our street assessment, just real briefly, I'll, I'll touch on that, is that we had our city engineer go through and do a road assessment of the type of road it is, the condition it is, essentially a synopsis of what it will take to get it back into shape and the projected costs of doing so. And so, we have that and kind of are going to be using that for a budgeting tool and an. and an operational project tool going forward of what streets need to be addressed when. So, but another kind of byproduct of that conversation is the discussion of maintaining rights of way, utilities and roads that have not been officially accepted by the city. So typically what happens is you've got a developer that is wanting to put in homes, roads, storm sewer, sewer, water, whatnot. So there's usually project plans, agreements, things of that nature. And the developer is the one usually is the one that's coordinating with a construction company to put all of that infrastructure into place. Well, once all of that is done through the plating process and the installation of the water sewer lines, whatever improvements that are going in, there is an inspection obviously by the city, but more importantly, an overall acceptance needs to be obtained and granted from the city council to say, hey, we've accepted that right of way, we've accepted that road, we've accepted that water sewer line. And the reason for that is because upon acceptance, then the city is now responsible for ongoing maintenance. So just to recap, kind of what we talked about previously at another meeting, on the screen is Betty Matkins, I guess the call of Betty Matkins Avenue, it's also been referred to for years as Unaccepted Avenue. I'll turn that off so people can kind of see better, but. So this is a case where a right of way was created, and I don't have the right of way lines up there, but it's a gravel road, as you can tell, and then there's also some water and sewer lines that kind of go through this area. The right of way, as far as all of the documentations that I've seen, the right of way has been in kind of dispute for a while as far as the city accepting it, and there were some requirements that needed to be achieved before the city would do so. And so you've got a right of way that was created and platted, but their official approval was never given or stamped saying, hey, that's now a city right of way. Obviously, with our subdivisional rules, we, at this point in time and for the past fifteen years, we would have required the development to go in, that would have had paved streets. So likewise with water and sewer, there has to be an acceptance or an approval process. So primarily, the question here on Betty Matkins Avenue is really the road. They're really having a hard time with these gully washer storms that we have, with it not draining properly, and then the road ending up out into the street. There is also, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, there's some utility issues with substandard sewer lines, they weren't built as sewer mains for the city, and some undersized water lines as well. And so, I'm gonna go through that just briefly here, just like I did with a few other locations in town. And really, the goal, I think, of this conversation is to get a better understanding of what the council is comfortable with as far as the city conducting or taking on responsibilities of areas that have not yet been accepted. In this case, Unaccepted Avenue or Betty Matkins Avenue, we talked about the path going forward of how does, how do we change that? Well, infrastructure needs to be updated, so sewer and water. Also, the street would need to get improved. But, there also is a requirement that the city would have to function and act of technically accepting that area either before or after it's repaired or replaced. And it's essentially understanding, okay, who's gonna do that work? Who's gonna pay for those improvements? Well, you've already got houses that have been there for forty years. Is that their burden, or is the city willing to accept responsibility for that? Accept the right of way at the way it is, accept the utilities the way they are, and then move forward with repairs and getting to a good spot with that. So that is one spot. Another spot, and we, in this area right now, we don't provide any services other than we allow water and sewer to function in that area, but we're not affecting any repairs to that area.
And we don't provide any normal routine maintenance?
No. The road, we have several requests several times a year to go up there and blade the road. We do not do that because we have not formally accepted it. Now, when we do have the gully washers, that material, that gravel goes down onto the highway and becomes a public safety hazard. So then we will take the Bobcat over there and we will clean it up and try to patch it up as best we can so that there's not an issue related to that, but we're moving that material back just from where it came here a little bit, not way up the road. So, it is my understanding and belief that, you know, this right of way has never been accepted. There are some other issues with utilities and that, you know, we operationally have not been conducting maintenance on it. Okay. So that's one spot. Another spot is behind City Hall here, Robinson Drive. This one is unique in the sense that it also has water lines, it also has sewer lines, and obviously this road, but what it doesn't have compared to the other one we just talked about is it does not have a designated right of way that was platted. This road falls within property boundaries and easements, so there's access easements that get these people up to their homes. So the city is a property owner here, if I can zoom in. We own, we own this stretch about right through here. So this Robinson Drive goes through our property and ends approximately in this area is where our property boundary is. So, as a city, we need to be able to maintain this portion of it and down to Deerfield Road, but the rest of it is all private property. We don't have anything to do with it, it was not accepted. There has been water line issues with freezing. There has been issues with the road. If the road fails up above here, it's going to help fail the rest of this road with the way it runs off. And so it's kind of a challenge to only fix portions of the road. So we try to fix our portion of the road, but it's constantly a struggle back and forth as to getting that accomplished for the long term. In order for this one to move forward, you know, the water lines freezing up would have to be addressed. Again, it comes down to the dollar amount of who's gonna fix what and when. Also, a right of way would have to be planted, so there's some engineering work that hasn't been yet to do there.
As with Betty Matkins, I know personally I've received direct communication and correspondence with the residents up there requesting that we either blade or even in the winter, help plow because they can't get in and out of their driveways. And to my understanding, we provide none of those services for either of the two that we've already talked about.
One of the other issues was our Robinson Drive behind us is, we do have, and this is why it's important for us to follow rules as it relates to subdivision or buildings or whatever. There is a requirement that the roads can only be a certain grade, percentage of grade, and I think it's twelve, twelve percent grade, I think is the max. Robinson Drive exceeds that, and so it doesn't fit our subdivisional regulations, and I doubt highly that you're going to be able to get it into compliance. And so if you tackle that problem, that's, it's not just a water line issue and a drainage issue, it's a steepness of the hill issue and our ability to plow it, you know, going forward with snow removal and whatnot. So there's kind of a tangled questions that need to be walked through related to every one of these. The next one that we do, and we don't do any maintenance up here, if I failed to say that before. Another area that has not been accepted, but this one's a little bit different, unique, and I'll get to that in a second, is Major Lake Drive through the Sunset Creek subdivision. You've got Major Lake Drive that approximately starts here on the edge of the screen and comes all the way through Deerfield Road. This project was installed through council approval back in two thousand six, two thousand and seven as a subdivisional development, and there was a TIF associated to it. And so there's a right of way that's been designated, so that's in place. There has been water and sewer installed into these and stubbed out to the individual properties to be developed. And so that have been, those have been put into the ground as well. The road does exist, it is missing its second lift of asphalt out there. And I know of that part of the discussion back in two thousand and seven, and I think that's before everybody's time at this table, including my, that there was an approval from the council previously that said the existing lift of asphalt on that street would be there at least for a little bit, for compaction, but that there was a desire of the developer for the city to help out with snow removal on Major Lake Drive. And so in winter times, we do plow this street with city resources, but yet, the right of way and the utilities have not been formally accepted by the city. So the right of way exists, the road exists, and the utilities exist. Now, there will be at some point a second lift of asphalt that needs to go on this as well, and that's an ongoing project that will come to fruition at some point in time. But we are, this is one case where we are doing maintenance or operational enhancements, maintenance to an area that has not been formally accepted to the city. There are, and I think that pretty much covers it, there's, I will mention just one more spot down here, down by the Little White Church. And it's, this one's kind of the same as Unaccepted Avenue or Betty Matkins Avenue. It's Pond Place where it goes into Pond Court, which is the Little White Church, and that road behind the Car Clinic and the Masonic Lodge there. This is all private property back here, there is no designated right of way. There is no, I believe there are easements, and so it's kind of, this kind of functions like Robbinsdale Drive to a certain extent where there's easements for access. But again, because of the road isn't consistently maintained as a group, and they all share this common drive, we get a lot of runoff in that same gravel coming down the hillside, going out into the highway where we sweep that up and kind of kick it back onto that private property. So again, we don't maintain that. I think about once a year, I get contacted from property owners and neighbors to try to understand what's going on there and maybe try to get it addressed. And they are shocked to find out that it's all privately held, even though it has a street name, but that was because of emergency standards that changed back after nine eleven. Addressing changed in Hill City, I think in about two thousand and four. And so all roads, even public or private, got a road name. And then addresses were aligned to make it easier for emergency personnel to find people. So again, this one's privately held, it's going to privately owned facilities. We don't do any maintenance, but we get requests a lot for this one as well, and all we do is we kick the gravel kind of back up to them. You know, I'm sure there's other little spots throughout the city, but those are kind of the big ones. I know that people are wanting special consideration from the city. Operationally, we've been trying not to do those things and not to provide those operational services because we don't own those streets. And so there's gotta be a solution out there, and just maintenance-ing it doesn't seem to be the permanent or complete solution to that. So, that's kind of a gist of where we're at. And so, I guess we're looking for some direction as it relates to our activities on those types of streets.
And the maintenance on those streets. So, thank you Brett. So as Brett has laid out, those are roads that we've identified that exist within city limits. And we are working toward solutions on how do we address that. So, as we spoke last week, we're doing some further research and we've gotten approval to move forward on the Betty Matkins Court and what we need to do on that. So we will be looking to council for the other things, but in the interim, we wanted to present this to bring an awareness and open it up to the council for discussion relative to the maintenance, as some areas do expend city resources and money. So before I turn it over to the council, is there any conversation at the, any conversation from the public?
Yes. Connie Sunby, three six nine Deegan Drive. You know, I feel bad for those areas that have never been accepted by the city and really don't have a road. We live on a street that was accepted by the city in nineteen ninety-five, and we can't seem to be getting any pavement or getting that road fixed. We have twenty-eight homes on those streets, and nothing is ever done. We've been coming to these meetings year after year after year. We all pay very high real estate taxes, and we would like for those roads to be repaired and maintained. And we're accepted, and we're worrying about areas that haven't even been accepted? What about those that have? I've reviewed my subdivision plat, the city took responsibility for those streets. We just want to have a good street. And when you talk about the gravel and the erosion coming down, go by Major Lake Road that comes off Deegan right now. Nothing has ever been cleaned up of what runs down onto that pavement. It's a total mess. Do we call in and say, come clean the street? No, we don't. We would like to expect that it's clean, but it's not, so our gravel's at the end of Major Lake.
Thank you. Brett, I'm gonna ask that you please make sure that the Sunbys receive a copy of the condition report that we received from the engineer. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something too, New York Barker, Lacy's Court. I've heard nothing about hard surface. I was under the impression that you guys were going to do an evaluation on all the roads
Absolutely.
And talk about it. The previous maintenance people used to come out and clean out the ditches. The ditches alongside my home have got the road, about this deep in those ditches have not been touched. That road is in such bad shape, you've got rocks, big boulders coming out of the road. You've got a sewer drain that's exposed. That someday, when that plow comes through there, it's gonna tear it off. So people are not looking at our roads. And I do have another concern, and this is not really roads, but I appreciate Mr. Householder and Mr. Gillespie to be here. We have two other Aldermans that are now calling in. Bill Minor, I don't know, do these guys not care about what's going on? They just sit at home and call in? I was under the impression, if you get elected to one of these positions, you should be here and listen to the people. I have been here since twenty-twelve asking for road pavement or something being done about those roads, and nothing has been gone on. I always hear, we're gonna look into it. It's time now to do something. This has been going on long enough.
Thank you. Brett, will you please make sure that the Barkers also receive a copy of that assessment? And it is also available, was it in our packet today? No, it was in the last one then. We will make sure that if anyone would like a copy of it, all they need to do is ask us and we will make sure that it gets prepared, as that is a matter of public record. Any additional comment? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Council, I'm gonna open it up to you.
Well, each one of these unaccepted roads have their own set of problems, as for darn sure. As to, as to Deegan and Lacy Court, I wish we had a lot of money. I'd love to pay everything in town and get it up to snuff. And that's one of the reasons, I guess, when you see the road report, why we did a road report, so that we have an idea of where we need to start. And, you know, we'd be glad to discuss with you if you guys look at the road report and so forth, but not to dismiss your wants. We all have wants, the city has to start where it's needed the worst, so, with what money we've got. Plus, we also need to maintain the roads that have been paved in town and not totally neglect those to the point where we have to repave paved roads, so. The answer to those three is a lot of money.
Yep.
A lot of money. And Brett, you threw out some kind of rough figures of, like on the Betty Matkins Avenue, what that would cost in the ballpark years ago, several years ago.
I'm still work, I'm working on updated numbers for the water part and the road part, and so I don't have those quite ready. I know the sewer line issue was about ninety thousand dollars, but that was a couple of years ago, so add a little extra for that. And that's just- And that's just to address a sewer line.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, the road report, I mean, it gives a condition of the road, not whether it's gravel or paved. It talks about the condition of the road. And so trying to prioritize always gets, well, into the wants versus needs, and that's kind of where we're at. And the question on the table tonight is the maintenance and expenditure of city resources on roads that are not accepted, and what needs to be done? Are we going to accept them? Are we going to bring them into the fold eventually? What process has to be done? And, I mean, ultimately, you're asking for direction on that right now, and they should probably all be the same. They either all get it, or they all don't. And some of them, at this point, it's, well, we are doing most of them. The city's not working on most of them.
Alderman Doty?
Hey, my feelings are that if the roads are not basically deeded to the city, that we should not be spending time and resources on those roads, so that way we can address roads that are deeded and operated by the city. And I do know what they're talking about as far as the Deegan Drive goes. I go up there quite a bit and understand their complaints, especially in the wintertime. So I definitely think that that should probably be one of the things that we start to look at, is what resources are we putting on streets that we have no control over versus streets that we do?
Okay.
I'm not sure we have the answer we can come up with tonight.
So as far as prioritization of what needs to be done first and second and things like that, I agree. I think that warrants a longer discussion, right? And where do you start? You know, you've got houses that are paying taxes, just like everybody else is, and they sit on roads that aren't maintained by the city, and to clearly look at the condition of what they're at, it's not even in the same realm. I don't know if you gentlemen have had a chance to drive up there, but I literally saw foot and a half, two-foot ruts. So, you know, that was one of the reasons why we put it on the table. The other, the reason, or the thought about bringing it up to talk about maintenance is just that we're not very consistent in how we apply things, and I think as we move forward, consistency is something that we need to work through. So if we take a look at, you know, if we pave, we need to look at not just one road, but all the roads that need to be paved. So we need to be consistent. We can't, we've been inconsistent, clearly, by the way things kind of lay out. So in taking a look at the unaccepted roads that we did talk about yesterday, there are some inconsistencies in how those are cared for by the city, and we were hoping to get additional direction from the council relative to, do we leave it as it is? Do we try to bring it into line with everything else? How do we manage that? So.
Well, I don't think we can make a decision until we get some solid cost figures involved in it.
And the decision as far as...
Whether we actually do go ahead and try to get these roads brought into the city and brought up.
Okay.
My question Brett, like on Betty Matkins Avenue, that's fairly steep, not as steep as Robinson's, but if you brought that up and not paved it, if you brought it up to a good gravel standard, how are you going to keep the gravel at that state from coming down?
So, you know, you've got to have the ditches in place, you've got to have the road crowned effectively, so that the water, you know, once that water hits the road, it should be going not down the road, but it should be going sideways into the ditches as soon as possible. I know what we run into with some of the other roads, the gravel roads in town. You get a scenario where somebody's got a gravel driveway, you know, so this is not city, this is not city ground, it's somebody's private driveway up to their house, it's gravel. If their road isn't crowned, their road, that water is going to come straight from their driveway onto our road, and then it'll hit our road, and then our road has got to be good enough to get it off of our road into the ditch as quick as possible. Well, you're going to have erosion through there, especially with the gully washers that we get in the summertime. It's pretty rare we get a nice gentle rain all day long. You know, we get these squall storms that come through like crazy. But if we can get those, you know, private roads or driveways crowned, so we're getting that water into the ditches, get the roads crowned, so they're getting the water as soon as possible into the ditches, you can manage it. Now, you're not always going to keep all the gravel from moving. That's a function of these gully washer storms that we have, that, you know, when it rains an inch and a half an hour, and then it stops, you're going to have gravel movement. It's not pavement. Something else, and I think this is an appropriate time to talk about it, but our new public work director, Travis Kettner, has been working with a couple of the asphalt companies to better understand the products that are available out there. And so we're trying to learn more about that and bring it back to council at a later date, but some of it is, you know, we talk about doing asphalt, we talk about kind of hardening up the road surface and whatnot, so that you don't have those, gully washers aren't moving all of your material down. Well, I guess there's some sort of a process out there where it's not quite asphalt, but it's better than gravel, it makes a harder surface. And so for those streets that aren't paved right now, there might be an opportunity to use this product or process. Again, I don't know much about it at this time, but it creates a harder surface that you can actually push snow on, and that it will be fairly durable, and then you won't get sign of that gravel transfer down through there. It's not going to be a full-flinch asphalt street, but it's going to be a lot closer to it, and it may function for, you know, five, six, seven years.
Is that the chip seal you're talking about?
Yeah, it's some kind of a chip seal for gravel roads. And so it's something that we're looking at. And again, the price is going to be a lot cheaper, but it's still going to be significant. I mean, we're still, you know, depending on the length of the road, we're still going to have to blade it, get it up to shape first, and then put that product on top of it. And so you're still talking tens of thousands of dollars to do that. It just depends on how long and wide that road is. So there are other options out there for us to look at. You know, asphalt to the way to the standard that we've been doing it is not cheap. We're not saying that we don't want to do that, we're just saying that it's an expensive process, and we want to make sure we're doing it right if we're going to go down that path. Now, this other product may be kind of a hybrid solution that might work quite well until that day that we can pave. I don't know, but it should be part of the discussion. You know, I don't know, over on that Betty Matkins, I don't know the, what road base is under there right now. You know, I don't know how it was constructed, if there's other drainage issues that we're not quite aware of at this time.
Yeah, but some of our own roads could potentially be candidates for that.
Correct, yeah. We have some other streets in town, you know, Smokey Drive has some drainage issues with it, and it gets a lot of frost heat in the spring with the frost coming out of the ground, where there's a section that's probably about, oh, a hundred and fifty yards long, where it's just gooey, and it just kind of, literally, the ground floats there, where it's, it needs to be super exposed and excavated, and the road needs to be built, you know, starting six, eight feet down. Again, that one's special in that it's closer to the creek, and so you've got some other things going on underneath the soil surface that you just don't regularly see. During the summer, it's typically not a problem, but that spring, it's, I mean, we typically always have to close it because it's impassable.
So I'm going to kind of bring us back a little bit, because we've started to go down the path of prioritizing and things that we need, and do expect that at a future council meeting, we will have that discussion on overall what the road assessment tells us, and then how council feels we should start to prioritize the work that needs to be done. Because on it, you're going to see what needs to happen to maintain roads that we already have that are paved, to make sure that we don't have to ultimately replace them or can get more life out of them. Plus, how does that, how does it all fit together, so we can truly develop that plan that we need at the council's recommendation? I'd just like to circle back on the maintenance aspect that's related to this. So again, we seem to be inconsistent. We're faring toward an end where we don't necessarily do anything to maintain any of these unaccepted roads, and while we can have plans for them, we don't currently expend any resources to do that. So that's really the question that's on the table for the council tonight.
Mayor, if I could just jump in real quick. So, you know, operationally, you know, everything that we do is going to cost money, whether it's staff time, equipment, fuel costs, just time, materials, whatnot. You know, these roads do need attention. There's no doubt about it. I don't think that's in question. Robinson, Unaccepted Avenue, Pond Place, you know, even Major Lake Drive, and the offshoots of Major Lake Drive and the development, they need attention. You know, they need roadwork, they need gravel, they need plowing snow, whatever it is. I guess where I'm coming from is that each one of those locations that I pointed out has its own unique circumstances and its own unique solution that needs to be followed. And there's a dollar amount attached to it somewhere, and I don't know what that dollar amount is, and we can try to chase that, but again, I don't think we're going to be able to do that tonight. I guess my question is, or my, yeah, I guess, request is, because we know these places exist, it's not that we don't care about them, it's just that we've got to do some other legwork first in order to find that path to this complete solution for them. And it's tough to say this, but I guess my request of the council would be that we don't, we continue to not do maintenance on these areas that we have not accepted. We don't have an obligation to do so, that we can, instead of pushing snow or gravel or whatever it is on these streets, that we can bring that attention and those needs to the streets that we do own. And that each situation, whatever it may be, that there is a path that we work through that to get to the point where they're accepted, or maybe there's a homeowners' association that is formed in order to address the problem. But ultimately, you know, their utilities are fixed, the roads, you know, get the pavement or the gravel that they need. I guess what I'm looking for is just an okay from the council of saying, this is a consistent operational best practice, that we are not doing those things for streets that are unaccepted, but we are willing to work forward with those individuals to find that solution in the future. So I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you Brett.
From an operational standpoint, it, you know, it's, again, not that we don't care about these roads and not that they don't need help, but again, we get recorder requests all the time for this kind of stuff, and we need to know that we have a clear direction. So, thank you.
Yeah. Council?
Well, it makes sense that we, I mean, the city takes care of the things that they own and not the stuff that we don't, or that we're supposed to take care of the stuff we're supposed to take care of, versus those that we don't. And that would be, I mean, making it consistent makes sense. And, yeah, I mean, we did have a little bit of discussion, looked at the road plan and everything, and, and so I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing it, but it's still on the, it's still on the table. I mean, I remember the discussions before, I can tell you, there's still money in the budget that gets put into street funds, and it is a matter of figuring out the best course, considering the state of the road, be it paved or not.
May I say something on that?
I'm sorry, we've, I've closed comment.
Okay.
I had to, we have to follow the rules today to keep this moving.
That's okay, we get shut out all the time. I've been shut out for the last five, six years.
Go ahead, Alderman Gillespie.
Well, and I'm hoping that the chip seal and stuff that was discussed will help and bring some closure to Deegan and everything up that road. At least that's my hope. It's a more, while it may be expensive, it's more, I don't know, it's more economical than paving right now, doing a full asphalt on it. But that is things that I guess we still got a discussion going through.
Right, right.
So I guess I don't have anything else.
Okay. Alderman Doty?
No, I agree that we need to get everything on the same page here, and definitely look into a lot of these roads that we have, such as Deegan, where there are deeded roads that need to be taken care of, and kind of just see where all these non-paved roads fall on our plan as far as the road maintenance. I definitely think that's one thing that we need to sit down with as a council, go over that, that a plan pretty good, and get a timeline as far as what roads we're going to do, what year, and get a timeline for it, figure out how to budget for it, and stick to that plan.
Okay. All right. So with all that being said, we've got an ask that was put on the table to have council recommendation on maintenance as it relates to unaccepted rights-of-way and unaccepted roads within the city. So is the council in a position to formalize some type of motion?
I guess I'm not real comfortable at this stage, until I, I guess I want to look at the safety aspects of these roads. These are still people, although the roads haven't been accepted, these are still people that are paying taxes, they are citizens of our community, and I want to, I don't think we're addressing the safety issues of these roads. I'm not saying that we come in and build a new road or something, but maybe there may, you know.
Okay.
That's something that, to me, is very important, is that our citizens have something to drive on to save.
Okay. Anybody else caring to make a motion?
Well, we need to do it one way or the other.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I don't disagree with Dale at all. I mean, we got to do, it's, we need to have good things in place and stuff, but, you know, we should be doing it the same.
Okay. So do you have a motion in mind?
I'd make a motion to treat them all the same, I guess. I mean, I'm, ultimately, I'm open to whether or not we do it or don't do it, but given that most of them we don't do, then that would be my motion, that we do all the, I mean, we'll continue to work and get things put together so we can get them accepted, and hopefully sooner rather than later.
Okay.
With it, but that would be it.
So if I can maybe see if I can...
Can we just spit that out a little different?
If I can kind of hear what you're saying. So you're saying that your motion is to continue in activities that we're engaged in to address unaccepted roads, and until a point that they become accepted, we treat them all the same with regard to maintenance? Right now, the majority is that we provide no maintenance, so that would be across the board. Is that close to what you were saying?
That's acceptable.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty. Any further discussion?
Well, by passing this motion, that doesn't lock us into long term. I mean, this is going forward at this point in time. We're still not going to give up on what is the best master plan.
Correct. Right, that has, that is a separate topic relative to your prioritization and what the best master plan is, understanding your streets and the condition. This is with regard to the specific maintenance that we have on these unidentified streets that we've never really talked about holistically in the past.
I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just simply focusing on the request, whether, what we do with them, whether we maintain them, and whether that's snow or blading, and we don't braid a lot of them.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia?
Carl Duddy.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Motion carried. Action item seven H, second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one, and ordinance amending chapter two definitions and chapter ten sign regulations within title nine zoning and subdivision regulations.
This is an ordinance revision of Hill City Municipal Code, Chapter Ten Sign Regulations. The signed ordinance amendment is a result of approximately twenty-six planning and The signed ordinance amendment is a result of approximately twenty-six planning and zoning meetings from January twenty-third, twenty nineteen to July twentieth of twenty twenty. Advertising and proposed ordinance changes were placed in the prevailing, chamber newsletters, direct, uh, business email blasts, and via regular mail to all commercial property owners and business owners within the city limits. The revised ordinance was delivered to city council on February tenth of twenty twenty for the first reading. Council voted to table the amendment with one of the objection, objections, being the meetings were all held on Monday evenings. Planning and zoning held a highly publicized daytime meeting and an alternative evening meeting with prior advertising in the Rapid City Journal and the prevailing. Hard copy of the proposed changes again went out to all commercial property owners within the city limits and invited them to join these meetings. There was nothing heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that, at those two meetings. P and Z voted to send the amendment back to city council. Although the amendment is far from a full rewrite, there were areas of clarifications needed and new definitions were provided. Input from citizens resulted in the addition of feather flags with no advertising and sandwich boards to the exempt sign list. Air puppets, obscene pornographic subjects, and animated and digital signs added to the prohibited sign list. Expanded the distance required between off-premise signs, increasing the sign transition area by the addition of Walnut Avenue from McGregor to East Main Street, and an introduction of a yearly temporary sign permit. On July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, the first reading of the signed ordinance amendment occurred at city council. First reading was passed by a vote of three to one with the following changes requested by council. Update the ordinance number to reflect the current year and clean up grammatical errors. Those changes have been made, and tonight is the second reading of the proposed changes.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna open it up to any public comment right now, and I wanna remind the folks that are in the audience, this is the only time that we will entertain public comment. Once it closes, it will close for that item. So if anybody wants to address the council, please come up to the podium.
Vic Alexander, um, I had a question about the sign transition area. Can you, is, can I ask a question? Uh, Danny, what that, what that means?
Uh, it's the west side of Walnut Avenue, which is, um, about three quarters. I'd say about three quarters commercial.
I don't know where it, I don't know where it's at. I just wonder what it does, what it changes.
Would move it from here, added this on to up to here. Um, it's currently here and here. And because this is, is predominantly commercial, um, sign transition area.
So that is a commercial, predominantly commercial area? You would agree with that?
I would say about three quarters, yes. There are some residential properties.
Cause I know when we, I know when we...
It's not zoned that way yet.
There was one residential property that...
Yeah, it's all not zoned that way yet, I don't think.
No, it's not all commercial, yeah. There are, there are about three, I think, that are residential.
I know that in my bigger picture, I would be, gonna be treating that area probably like the, like the, uh, twenty-year plan says it's probably gonna switch over to commercial as it goes. But we had quite a, quite a conversation about it when, when it dealt with that house of Russ's and the, I don't even remember what the circumstance was, but that, it was clearly at that point, everybody decided it was residential, because his one, he wanted to keep that residential. Remember what that circumstance was?
Drive through Lickers store.
Uh, it was since then.
Well, that was the proposed, and it was discussed, the, the commercial nature of that, of that residential area.
The thing, it had to do with a sign that I was proposing to put on the property next door. And it was a commercial sign, it's still applicable, it should still be able to be put there right now. The life in my last eight weeks has been like zero as far as ability to be able to visit with anybody. And I've talked to Dale a couple of times, haven't had a chance to talk to either of the new council people yet. But that primarily is public space all the way, that's one half of Railroad Avenue. And it's nearly public space all the way from one end to the other. The end of the part, the, the north end affects my properties basically totally. I mean, that's, that's, all of those properties are commercial in nature, they're gonna be commercial someday. It leads that way in the twenty-year plan. If they're gonna be commercial, I, I don't know why we pick that section of street and pull it out and, and wanna make a transition area out of that. When the other side of the street, Railroad Avenue, is not, it's commercial from one end to the other. And there's, you're, you're doing it for the beautification of it, but the other side of the street doesn't have any consideration at all. It seems like it should go together, either both sides of Railroad Avenue from one end to the other, or leave it as it is right now and let it happen, let it change like it's gonna change on the, over the course of time that it's gonna change.
Okay.
You know, if that, if that makes any sense at all.
Okay.
I, I, I just don't know why we target that space from our Savior Lutheran Church to the, the, the Bronze Buffalo down there. That space is targeted to change into a transition zone. Most of the rest of it, from McGregor all the way to the Bronze Buffalo from one end to the other, has a church in it, which I would consider a public space, has the city and the Boys and Girls Club and the school from one, all the way to the end. And the only really property, I guess there's the one, uh, that Bauer's own across from the, our Savior Lutheran Church. And Russ Johnson's, otherwise that, that's, that's all public space from one end to the other. So it's easy to, to just carte blanche, write public space. But I do take exception to changing that, that section to, uh, sign transition area. I kinda talked to Dale about it before, I think. I don't know if this is, if this is the second reading, if this passes tonight, second reading, is it done to you then?
Yes.
It's published in the newspaper.
I again kick it out.
And you can, um, get a, you know, signatures to put it out.
I kick it out again, Dale, just to the, just to the idea that there really, there's no real specific inclination to do that. Just let it change as it gets ready to change. And I would, I would suggest leaving that sign transition area expanded from Walnut to McGregor East, to Main, to East Main Street, leave that part off, the changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead then now and close public comment, council. I'm gonna open it up to any discussion.
You know, to answer Mr. Alexander's comment, uh, you know, I'm looking at the commercial zone table versus the transition, you just don't see that many, it's not gonna affect that much, it just doesn't.
It's not gonna affect it...
I mean, you look at the two tables.
That's why I was asking Danny to explain that, and I didn't, she explained where it was.
Yeah, I mean, you're, right now it's under commercial, it will go to transition. Danny, it just doesn't.
You have, you have the table in front of me, I'm sorry, Dale. I don't have my...
And if that's the case, Dale, that it doesn't change much, why change it then? I agree with you.
I guess...
It's like giving away part of my...
Okay, so we, we need to not make this a debate. This is the time that the council can discuss their decision and how they're gonna proceed.
Well, that was my question too, what, what would it change, what's the difference? Cause I mean, I, I've read through it and looked at it, but that makes me not an expert.
Do you like Dan, Danny now?
So what, you know, the, the transitions zone and otherwise, if there aren't many changes in it, it's not gonna hurt it to change it to transitional, but what are the differences?
I can, I can tell you why the commission decided to add that section of road into the transition area. And that's in recognition of the amount of traffic that we get from the eighteen eighty train coming into our main street. And because it's facing the eighteen eighty train and all of those, all of those potential visitors coming in, it was felt that, you know, although there isn't a big change between what's allowed in a standard commercial zone from a signage perspective to the transition zone, what, what that transition zone does do is your billboards, your billboards, your billboards, your billboards. And a transition zone starts eliminating those before you get to your central business district where you have that quaintness. So I think it's more of an aesthetic reason.
That's basically what it's doing, it's...
So you didn't want big billboards along that stretch? That's, is that about what it does?
I've made it clear that we're not gonna take any more public comment after it was closed. And a closed public comment, so council?
Yeah, it prohibits off-premise signs, it prohibits freestanding signs. But that's the only two things that I'm seeing, um, in the transition signs. So it's, yeah, it's what the, what the Planning and Zoning Commission felt, is what Danny said.
Carl, any comments?
Not on the train side.
Carl, any comments? Sorry, I'd ask you to please refrain, I've already closed public comment. I made it perfectly clear at the beginning of the meeting and before we started discussion on these, that once public comment was closed, it's time for the council to make their decisions. Carl, any discussion?
No, I, I think I'm good. I mean, it's just kinda hearing what's going on. I mean, to me, they, just having that transition area where it is, I mean, there is a bunch of commercial properties down there. I, to me, in the future, I do see more commercial on that end. And it's not really hurting much just leaving it the way it is.
Okay. So Brett, what are the council's options tonight?
So this is the second reading of this ordinance, uh, the first reading passed, uh, two weeks ago. So you've got the opportunity to vote tonight, just to make a motion in a second to approve the, the ordinance as written and proceed with the second reading and take the vote. Your other options are to amend, if there's something in the language that, uh, you as council members aren't comfortable with, you can try to adjust that language in there to something more suitable. Or the third option you could do is, um, you could defer the question to another meeting, you could, um, table it till the next meeting, uh, if you need more time to address it. Again, you know, with, with common councils and government, you know, it's always majority rules. So you've gotta take a vote on whatever motion that's put forth and seconded of where you wanna go with it. So, I mean, just, and, and this happens, you know, the question comes up quite a bit of saying, well, gosh, I like, I like everything that's in there except for this one, uh, piece of it. Well, if, if you have one piece as a common council member that you're not quite sure of, then, you know, you can work that out and, and potentially you can work it out in just a couple minutes. You know, I think Planning and Zoning has done a phenomenal job of, of discussing this. They've had several meetings, um, of, of time at their own meetings that have been set aside for this discussion. There's been a lot of outreach to the public in special meetings. There's been a lot of public comment that's been submitted. These amendments, in my opinion, are, are very basic. I don't think it's a fundamental rewrite of anything, I think it's just fine tuning what we've already got. And so I think, you know, that there's an opportunity, if there's things that you're not quite sure of, I think you can work through them rather quickly tonight, uh, from what I'm hearing. And then, uh, you know, I would recommend that you move forward with, um, having that conversation and moving forward with the second reading.
Well, part of the concern from what I'm hearing is that it doesn't apply to the entirety of Railroad Avenue, both sides. And why, was there discussion about that or, or what? I guess, I guess my question is this one.
Yeah, Danny would...
It's from, you know, from the aspect of, you've got, uh, these are all commercial. We've got up to here, commercial, and then this one is commercial. This is C three. So it was from the basis, understanding that, you know, these are following already commercial. This is, you know, including that in that, um, uh, transition district just because of the visibility from the eighteen eighty train and those, uh, visitors coming through. You know, is this an area that we wanted to be able to allow like highway type advertising in, which is what a C three would allow? And it was determined by the commission that, no, they wanted that quaintness to start. They wanted us to start it as they're coming across to that central business district area.
Okay. Well, I would think the train would want something similar and not have big billboards and boards and everything right next to their fans and stuff, a whole bunch of them along that whole street.
Yep, and they only have one up.
Yeah.
That, it isn't even theirs.
And I don't have any of them.
I'm sorry, we're not taking any more public comment. Thank you.
Train just got one on the other side though.
That's the one that's on the train.
Was approved recently.
It's been up there for quite a while, it was approved to be enlarged and footed.
If there's one section of this that is under debate or that you're struggling with, I'd hate to see the whole thing not pass for one section of it. So when Brett discussed your opportunity to maybe make some changes to it and still move forward with it, you have that opportunity if you think there's maybe some additional research that needs to be done or thought about, you know, the length of Railroad Avenue and things like that.
Well, the, 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 the short version of what I, what I guess I wanna say is, I think Vic's got a point between the sides of the road.
Okay.
You know, if we want people driving in, coming down, they see the train, and we wanna transition out, get rid of big bail, bailboards, not have that, I'm all for that. I mean, I appreciate the work that everybody has put into it. But if you have them on one side of the road compared to the other, and I don't know if Vic has plans to put big signs up there, or, you know, Rush puts a big, big old sign up on his house, uh, flashing lights, whatever, I mean, I don't, you know. And they might not have any plans to do that. Do you have any plans to do that, Vic?
I, the plans along there are as needed. I don't, if I wanted billboards along there, I'd have billboards along there in the last ten, fifteen years since I owned the property.
Yeah, and they don't know that there's any, uh, well, variants could apply, so that would still come in, into play. But, you know, I just ramble on about being consistent with things, so why wouldn't we be consistent with things?
Absolutely.
On both sides of the road.
Absolutely.
And it's not like it's heartburn, but it's, it is kinda, I'm thinking about being consistent with it.
There you go.
And whether it's one side or the other, I mean, the, the train side would have grandfathered sign in or something. I don't know how that would work necessarily. I, I get the, get the concept, I mean, of working it down. And I know you put a lot of work into it, Dale, and...
Well, I think the consistency, Jason, was that it, it was in, it was from McGregor to Elm. I mean, yeah, from McGregor to Elm, so it would make sense to be consistent going right on up Walnut, uh, street. Why, why did it stop with just the Boys and Girls Club Senior Center, that block? Why?
So that's transition.
That, that, making the transition.
Okay.
That was the thought, because it does border the main street. Railroad Avenue is a, is a street in itself. We're just talking about Walnut Street. Railroad Avenue to me is a different street, completely.
So then, where the Senior Center is and the Boys and Girls Club, that's all sign transition?
That's sign transition.
That's transition. So it's not commercial, it's transition, and they're trying to extend it down to that.
It's owned commercially, but it's in this transition.
It's in the transition sign district.
And the other stuff is residential.
It's, it's a mixture.
It's a mixture, right.
That's true. That someday, the comprehensive plan said someday that that should be focused as commercial, that next street.
So, again, you know, if, if you're really need additional information to make the decision, you can table this to the next meeting. You can make changes to what you have and pass it as, you can purely pass it as a second reading or if, and if somebody wants to make a motion to see where everybody's at with this.
Okay, this is the current sign transition area, that, this is currently what we have. Everything in yellow is the sign transition area. So the front side of Main Street, Deerfield, Walnut, um, Elm Street, McGregor, the rest of Main Street outside of that central business district. Because they recognize that there's businesses that are starting to fill in these spots here. This, and because of the visibility coming in from the, uh, train entryway here, that's the area they added, right on Walnut, right there.
So it isn't the other, okay. I was thinking that was...
Yeah, it's not in front of the Senior Center, Dale, that's why I asked that question.
My mistake.
Right.
But see, as you notice, it does go to Pine. The transition area runs up time on either side. We didn't anticipate that the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center, were gonna be putting... We didn't anticipate that the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center, were gonna be putting up any huge, large
Well, they're all city-owned properties, right now.
But we did recognize that that could happen there.
With the exception of the one on the corner, that's all city-owned between that block.
Does that help explain it a little bit better?
Yeah, well, you can't go in that area right now and slap up a billboard, can you?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, thirty-six square feet. And there is a variance process, I mean, if down the road Vic wants to come to, you know, ask for variance, that's what it's there for.
Okay, so, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve second ordinance.
Second reading?
Second reading.
Okay, so, motion Alderman Householder to approve second reading of ordinance 2020-01. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty, any additional discussion, Alderman? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote please. Carl Doty?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
As much as I want to, I think I would have voted no, just for that reason of between the two.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. All right, and action item seven I, 2021 Hill City Budget Appropriation, first reading, Brett? Or Stacia? Stacia's gonna take it.
Well, I'm just gonna spill out of some of the stuff that we did. We did balance, actually, our budget on everything that we did, and some of the things that we did to balance that budget was, we had to take out the telehandler that the Public Works has asked for, and in doing so, then we had to readjust some of the other line items, because we had a little bit of a surplus then in our general fund, so we increased the ambulance back up to the thirty thousand, so that they can purchase both of the items for the ambulance, what they think the community will really be thrilled to know that they can save in both, yeah, in both ambulants. Otherwise, there were some allocation changes, I know Dale brought it up to me earlier, regarding some wages that adjusted some of the individual departments' amounts, but it was nothing over the whole percentage of their entire wages, the hundred percent is still there, it's just divided in a couple of the different departments. Yes. So, if you have any other questions that you saw in the form, or the worksheets that I sent out, I will answer them. If Brett has anything else that we answered.
So, I have one, I have one item request that is not in this budget, but it, it kind of reared its ugly head, actually, today. And it's, and it was kind of on our sheet, and kinda got glossed over a little bit, but, and I need to do some more research, 'cause I don't know what the cost is. The signalized intersection here in town, the only one we have, over by the little white church, we actually have a maintenance agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, where we are in charge of making sure that that functions. And, so there's a utility box where all of the brains of it are on the corner there. And the equipment inside of that is outdated by, I mean, it's already probably fifteen to twenty years outdated. And it still functions, but when we get lightning strikes and the lanes get hit, it kinda wreaks havoc. And so it will default to a green light flashing, or a red light flashing and a yellow light flashing to keep traffic moving along. But that, the, the internal brains of that need to be replaced and upgraded. According to our maintenance agreement, and I will re-go over it before the next reading, requires us to be the ones that upgrade that, and then there is some money from the state that can get kicked back to us, so we're not completely on the hook, but there is a certain percentage of whatever upgrades that that needs. The challenge I have is, I have a feeling that it's, if we just talk about the, the brains of it, not necessarily the lights themselves, or the, the rest of the hardware part of it, it will probably be between, I would guess, twenty and thirty thousand dollars. It definitely needs that work done, there's no doubt about it. We do have surplus funds or improvement funds that would qualify for that to be brought into the budget. I just mentioned that now, to get it on the table. I don't have enough information to give you an exact, you know, is it, is it twenty thousand? I'm hoping it's only ten, but I doubt that that's the case, and I'm pretty sure it's not more than forty. But, if we can try to track that number down, I think that's a really important thing that's been neglected over the years to get addressed. The other way that we could handle it is a special request, where we don't add it to the budget, we come back to you later and saying, "Okay, here's the reality of what we found, we get you hard numbers of what the requirement is, and then we ask you to do a special transfer in of money during a budget year, whether it's this year or next year, and then we would have to adjust the budget after the fact to match up what action you took." So, we either can add it in now, or later, and, and either way will work. I just want you to be aware of that item. So, tonight's reading, we have it balancing, and it wouldn't be hard to balance this out. I think if we just add it for the second reading, if that's the path you wanna go down, that would not be considered a substantial change of the budget, in my opinion, and still would qualify for a second reading, especially since we bring up the discussion point tonight. So, your options are open, so I just need to make you aware of that. The rest of it, Stacia's right, we took the telehandler out, there was just no way for us to balance things out, we also had to, to move some things around in the Sewer Department for the infiltration improvements, where we actually had to make them capital improvements, I think. And we have to bring money in from capital reserves to offset that cost, which is an appropriate use of the funds. So, the rest of it is just, we've been going through the departments, I know we adjusted the city attorney's dollar amount in my budget and Stacia's budget down a little bit. A few tweaks here and there, whatnot, just to make everything match. In, in the budget, you will notice, there is that contingency dollar amount in the general fund, so that represents five doll, five percent of your overall budget, so that's kind of your, your cushion. So there's not quite seventy-four thousand dollars in the contingency fund.
So I must be missing something, 'cause the total appropriations and accumulations is four million ninety-one thousand, and it looks like our total means of finance is four million sixty-one thousand?
Some reason it got out of balance. Oh, it's the, I can see it right here, it's the...
How, how's the amount?
Oh, it's just the... Oh, we don't have a transfer in for the Triple B.
Okay.
That's...
So that's the thirty thousand?
Yeah, so that just got deleted or something, what was that, thirty?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, 'cause you're just thirty thousand difference, so...
Yep. There it is, some reason that got wiped out, so it was just that. So they match, four, so the overall budget's four million, this is, this is everything, the general fund, Triple B, the bid board, the debt service, and the water and sewer enterprise, comes to four million ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, Stacia, are you the one that's gonna read through this line item by line item?
I don't, I don't, I, I...
You used to do it.
I, I think, I, I know last year, I don't think we read it the first reading, I think we read it for the second reading. 'Cause it's still, it needs two reading in order to be adopted, so...
Okay, so how do you want this to roll, then, do you want the council to make a motion based on the four million ninety-one, and then make a motion relative to what needs to happen for the light pole, for the light?
I think, all you need is, I would do the, the light stuff, just a general discussion, I don't know if you necessarily need a vote.
Okay.
I, I guess you need a consensus as to, if you want, if you want that to be added into the budget, or if you want to just be aware of it, and that we might need to come back to you for a special monetary request that falls outside the budget.
Okay.
All that means is that October of, of whatever year we're in, with the expense, we'll come to you with the budget supplement, and make the adjustment before the end of the fiscal year, that's all that means, so we're either getting it ahead of time with this budget, or we can do it on the fly later, so... It doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, so let's have that conversation first then, what would the council, what are the council's thoughts on how to handle the additional expense for the light pole?
So you know about it, I think it's better to throw it in there and, and work through it, have it planned for, and planned around for whatever we need to do.
Okay.
Rather than just waiting and trying to grab some money for it.
Okay. Alderman Doty, your thoughts?
I agree, I think it's best to add it now, so that way, we know what we got going in, we don't have to worry about cutting money from something else later down the road.
Okay, and Alderman Householder?
Well, I'm agreeing, adding it in now, as long as we have some pretty concrete figures. I don't wanna just throw out a figure, twenty, well, maybe that'll work, or maybe forty. I think before we add it, we need to contact the state, or I suppose the state does the work, or who does the labor on changing it up?
So we would, we would have to hire our own company. We wouldn't have to go out to bid necessarily, we could if we wanted to. I'm sure that the state has their own contractors that are specialized in this type of work. I doubt that there's many companies that are, do just this work around here, usually, I mean, this is fairly specialized stuff, though usually there's like one main provider, there might be somebody else, so they can give direction. I guess what I would do tonight is, I would throw a number of thirty thousand dollars at it, just as a number, and then I can get better information in the next two weeks, and then adjust that number at the next meeting to more of what the reality is, again, it's just our best estimate of what those costs will be. And so you're not, you know, you're not locked into it, if it costs more, it costs more, if it costs less, it costs less. If you don't wanna do it, you don't have to spend that money. This is just our best guess at, at the projects and things that really need to get done in the next year, so... Again, we've got thirty thousand dollars in, in reserve improvement funds that can be moved in to offset the cost.
Then also, I'd like you to find out from the state, an anticipated return on their share.
Got two weeks, Brett.
Two weeks.
Got a new priority, okay.
We will make it happen.
Okay, so, we've had conversation on that, so we're not gonna do the read-through of everything until next time. So the understanding is that the replacement of the light will be budgeted in, so there will be a transfer in, and then there'll be a line item that represents that. Any other thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I didn't see anything else, I'd make a motion to accept the first reading.
Okay, we've got a motion Alderman Gillespie to accept the first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Householder, any further discussion? Roll call vote please, Stacia?
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried, moving on to discussion items, we've already heard from the Pennington County Sheriff, so we'll move on to action item eight B, Public Work Direct, Works Director's Report. Unfortunately, Travis is not here, he is dealing with some electrical issues that we're having with, with some regard to one of our water towers, so he had gotten called out and let me know that he wouldn't be available here for it. He has included his report out, you should see it in the packet. If there are any questions that anybody has on that, you can ask him, we might be able to, Brett might be able to fill you in on anything that you might have a question on. Give us a couple minutes, a minute to review that.
Any idea when the paving will start up and bull run?
We were, we were hoping, two weeks ago, you know, they, they, they're working right now on Shoe Rooster Drive, so there's that section of Shoe Rooster that's actually closed off, and they're working down there right now, trying to get things prepped, you know, the, the underground work, so they needed to get that before paving gets too, you know, going too much, 'cause they can go pretty quick with the paving. I don't have an exact, I know that they're still probably about two weeks behind. I wouldn't imagine, you know, during rally, you're not gonna get the asphalt company up here, so, I would imagine that we're probably looking at the last part of August would be the earliest that they'd be up here paving. So, we're probably, just because of rally, we're probably gonna be three weeks out, unless they're still hitting a lot of rock up there too, that they've gotta navigate through, so...
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move on to discussion item eight C, Wine Brew and Barbecue Tent Location, Brett?
So, there was a, a previously approved special event permit for the Wine Brew and Barbecue, and, and that was laid out as to kind of the operational, and I'm, I'm just pulled up a Hill City map here. And historically, and that special event permit was approved, and so you've got Elm Street that is typically closed down for the contestants that are cooking in the competition, to have their trailers and their cooking and whatnot, and then also down on Walnut in front of the Senior Center, and the Boys and Girls Club area as well. And then we do have, typically what happens is a tent is set up over in the gravel area of Rico's, and that's where they have the band and, and some food and whatnot. And so, and then we also have the open container that goes on, and so, I'm gonna let Emily Wheeler and Shane talk about their changes, but in, in essence, I want them to kinda share with you the project, 'cause we've got a whole new council now compared to when it was approved, and so we just wanna get you up to speed, but the other, the other question, the main question that came up is that the tent, this tent location isn't gonna work out this year, and so I think the request is for the tent to be placed on Elm Street, in order to make the event viable. And so we just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page with what they have planned.
Hi, I'm gonna let Shane do the talking, 'cause he's doing the measuring.
All right, so, basically, like Brett said, that the tent location isn't gonna work out. Basically, a couple of renters, the business owners there have chosen, thought it was too much of a liability as far as for the beer license. And so, we're actually requesting to move the, move the tent over here onto Elm, and still fall under the Alpine's license, I guess.
And so the, the big change from our previous permit is, we have Elm Street, we have those Elm Street on both sides, and Walnut Street closed starting Friday morning at 5:00 a.m. The tent company can switch tents, and they can put it up, we're, I was still trying to get a confirmed time, but as late as possible on Thursday. So we're asking to shut down this piece of Elm, to put the tent Thursday afternoon, instead of Friday morning at five. And we, we, we would still have access on Main Street... And we, we, we would still have access on Main Street, and there would still be alley access in there if you came upon it. But that, that's our big change is to close it, that, that piece earlier.
And how early is earlier?
Well, I was trying to get an exact time. I'm gonna say two PM.
At the Thursday afternoon.
At the Thursday afternoon.
And then they would be Sunday morning.
And then they can-
Pull, pull it down on Sunday morning.
It typically comes down Monday, but as, as long as we pay overtime for their crew, they'll come Sunday morning and tear it down. And that's usually when all the barbecuers are coming out.
We're still trying to, yeah, pull everything down at that time.
Yeah.
Next Thursday, what's the date?
August twentieth.
So with the tent going on Elm Street, uh, I know typically you'd, you'd have other things going on in that space. So how are you addressing, kind of shifting everybody around with the, with the competitors and stuff?
We're gonna move those three or four competitors that used to be in that spot. Um, we're gonna move some of them over into the parking lot of Rico's, um, in there where we do have power. Then we are going to, um, um, probably move, we're gonna put some into the parking, as I understand it, on the tennis court. Um, trying to get some in there. Uh, basically, this year with, with the whole COVID deal, none of these guys have been able to cook. Um, so we had a huge influx of people wanting to get in. Um, I think our largest-
We have forty-six teams. Last year we had twenty-six.
So, um.
But we do have more room along Walnut that we haven't used in the past.
We'll probably end up filling all of Walnut, Elm, um, from the Alpine back, um, to Pine there, and then that other part of Elm where the tent is not.
And, and we do have rentals with both the Senior Center and the Boys and Girls Club this year, so.
They do have some, the KCBS has, um, quite a few guidelines on the distancing and everything for just the judges, so.
How is the tent secured?
Uh, it'll be with the concrete blocks. It'll be the same type of tent that they do for the, uh, for the Arts Council. So we'll just set them down and, and tie it right down to that. Um, they were able to change the tent, a little bit different size than what we normally, um, get, but, um, it'll actually probably work out a little bit better. It's a little bit narrower, um, and just to shy longer, so. So it should work out pretty good.
So the, the earliest closure would be Thursday afternoon?
Yes.
Two-ish, we're saying?
I'm hoping for that.
Good.
If, if for this approval, I'm gonna say noon, but we're working to do it as late as possible.
And that's, and that's, that earliest closure is just for that section of Elm?
Just this. Yeah, we can code off that, so people can still use Main and turn, they would see, you know, the tent there.
So then the progression of, when would the next closure need to take place?
That would be the, what we have currently, the five o'clock in the morning on Friday. Because then we'll do all of our signage, and then teams are gonna start staging along Railroad, and then we park them all Friday morning and starting at seven thirty.
So you'd still have the tennis court open for night parking for any of the restaurants, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it would just be the change, that piece, to closing Elm earlier.
And the clinics closed on Friday? Is that right, isn't it?
No.
Clinic usually isn't open. They, they typically use the back parking lot. If they have people coming in, they use their back parking lot, um, for that, so.
But you have visited with them, I hope?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and Lorraine is fine with it too.
And the Alpine? I only say the Alpine because people park there for restaurant, for the restaurant at night, and they usually have long waits. So if you could just chat with Alpine and let him know.
They already know that, yeah.
Do that, okay.
A lot of positive ideas.
Oh, yes. There you go. Then they know. Hopefully you shared it with Moni.
Trying to move a lot of stuff and measuring and-
Yeah, this came up really last minute, but.
Okay. So, um, that's the proposal that they have. So Brett, what does the council need to do?
Yeah, so the, the, the permit was already issued with the conditions previously with the tent in a different location, and so that is already kind of on the books. So I guess tonight we just put it on as a discussion item, just for a general consensus that we could just work through any concerns you might have. But if there's a general consensus of approval for them to move forward, uh, if you're at that point, I would just have the mayor go around the room and, and confirm that. If, if not, uh, you know, we wanna make sure that we hear any other questions or concerns.
Rural questions or concerns? Okay. I'll start with you, Carl.
Um, so I'm here in Elm Street, so obviously I can't see, uh, what's going on there. So is it the Alpine side at Elm Street, or is it gonna be the-
No, it's, it's the other side of Elm Street, yeah.
Farmer's Daughter.
Farmer's Daughter side.
Between Main and the alley.
Okay. All right, so are you-
Yep.
Okay, sounds like Carl is a, yep. Um, Alderman Gillespie? I got a thumbs up there. I know you can't see that, Carl. And Alderman, Householder?
Sounds like a good barbecue to me.
Okay, so you have consensus, Brett. So thank you, guys. We appreciate you sticking around, um, for the prior discussions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, moving on into report items. Common council, let's start with Dale. Nothing to report. Um, Jason?
Nothing.
Nothing. And, um, Carl, anything?
Uh, I just wanna thank the Public Works guys for the hard work keeping Main Street clean and all the extra work they got going on right now at rally.
Okay. All right, thanks. So I'll be as brief as possible. Um, as everyone hopefully has seen, we have care packages, as we're calling them, that have been assembled at City Hall for businesses as well as residents. They have some masks in them as well as some hand sanitizer packets. So if anyone is interested, they can stop up at City Hall. If they're having a hard time getting them, just give us a call, and I'll go ahead and, and, uh, take my little mayor mobile and deliver them to them. So those are available here at City Hall. The other thing that I wanted to address was something that we already talked about a little bit earlier, um, with regard to the conflict of interest. So I had some questions that were posed to me by, um, another councilman relative to some case law that was cited on, uh, conflict of interest. And the specific case is, I believe it's Hanning versus the city of Winter. So that case, in essence, said that public policy demands that officials normally disqualify themselves when they have a business or personal interest in the subject on which they must vote, regardless of whether the interest creates an actual bias. In discussing this and understanding a little bit more information from our council with regard to conflict of interest, the, um, codified law that I read earlier actually came after that decision that was handed down. That decision was specific to an issue involving due process. And when that came out, um, later it was determined that additional codified law needed to be addressed, because there are many cases where you have situations where you have small towns, and typically in a small town, it's the same people that are involved in many things. So the state of South Dakota had actually enacted, uh, changes to the conflict of interest statement post that coming out. And that really was specific to due process. So I've read all the information that is specific to it, and the codified law also takes a position that puts in a dollar amount of amounts in excess of five thousand. So you and your travels may hear some people tell you, well, we do it based on five thousand. That's where all of that comes from. It comes from that. So the conversation that we had last week and where that was brought up and that superseded this email that I received, we really didn't take any votes at that time. We were discussing things, and even in that case, uh, during the meeting, we had gone around and talked to the other aldermen about it. So I wanted to make sure that I provided a little bit of clarification on that as well. Other than that, that was all I had, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Stacia, who we've been waiting to hear, because it says July financials.
Um, yes. So I closed out July with all actual numbers that we have received, meaning money we received in and also expenses we've expensed for the month. And this is all year-to-date. Um, uh, looking at our property tax year-to-date compared to last year, we're up three point one-two percent. Um, our sales tax collected for our general fund, um, which is up thirteen point five-six percent compared to two thousand and nineteen. Um, our overall, um, revenue for our general fund is up six point two-six percent. So we're looking good on that end in our general fund, which I'm pleased to see.
Okay.
Our gross receipts, um, our Triple B fund is most people know it as. Um, we are actually, with our total revenue year-to-date compared to last year, are up twenty point two-five percent. So, I mean, the numbers are coming in. Um, I know that we've been worried about it. I'm still, you know, on the fence. I'll feel better in the next month of seeing what comes in, to how, exactly how close we're gonna make what we budgeted out for the year. Um, of course, our business improvement tax, we are still down big there. It's thirty-seven point three-two percent. But we're gaining. It's better than the negative fifty-eight that we saw in previous months. So it's still ni- it's nice to see it come in. Um, our water and sewer funds, we are still both down in our revenue with our water and sewer funds. Um, our water is about five point nine-five percent that we're down, and our rep, our sewer, we're about six point four-four percent down. So.
Okay. Um, Stacia, I'd like to thank you for the information that you put together. It's very helpful to see where we sit year-to-date to have that number comparison, and I know it's a lot of work, so thanks for what you're doing. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Brett now, city administrator.
So first thing that's not on your list there is, uh, that, that section of railing that was damaged on the Main Street sidewalk. That's been replaced. That was done, I think, right after our last council meeting, so that's in place, looking good. I'm seeing a lot of people leaning on that railing, and it's becoming quite a nice little place just to kinda hang out and watch all the activity go by. A lot of people sitting on the wall like we had kinda thought they would, uh, underneath that railing too. So I think it's working out quite nicely. And thank you for, uh, voting to approve the trash cans. Uh, that will be a nice welcome upgrade for not only our downtown area, but our parks and whatnot too, so I appreciate that. Water reservoir project, I had a conversation with Kale, our city engineer today. He is working still on that engineering for the foundation of, uh, the water reservoir to make sure that wherever we put the tank, that it stays there and it doesn't come tumbling down the hill. He, in the discussions, um, he, we're also looking at cost associated to placing it, and we're actually looking, uh, as well as, um, the type of tank. There might be an opportunity to lower the position of the tank to a lower elevation and, and put up a, a welded steel bowl tank instead. So we're looking at that as well, 'cause it would achieve the same elevation that we need, but maybe would be less in cost. And so he said the engineer that he's talking to needed like two or three more days, uh, to investigate all those questions, so he doesn't have that information back yet. So at the next meeting, I should have that information for you.
So if that changes, does it change anything with rural development or state or anything?
No, it's just, it would just change the tank position. Um, we've, we've surveyed that site plenty enough times that we know kind of every little rock that's up there. Now it's just a matter of making sure that when it's viable and, secondly, you know, with the structural integrity of it, we're worried that the, the cost is gonna come in extremely high. So if we can adjust the elevation of it, we shouldn't see a cost benefits if we just build a different type of tank that doesn't need that same foundational work.
So at some point-
It shouldn't affect what we've been doing with rural developments.
At some point, will Kale be able to come in and explain to us all of what's been happening and going on and, okay?
Yeah, we can sure have Kale come in and give you all of the specifics of it. I mean, he's the boots-on-the-ground, the guy in the trenches that are having all of those conversations, so.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause it's at an engineering level right now, so.
Okay.
I could even make that happen if you want for the next council, have Kale come in, uh, and do a, a briefing on it.
If he'll be prepared, it would be good for the council to see, because I know we've been continually saying rural water and rural water, and now we're talking about a change of it. So just to confirm to the council that any work that we've already done as far as crossings and location, while the location will change, it'll still be, we'll still be able to utilize what we've already put into the project.
The next item, the Major Lake Bridge project, and so, uh, the, um, the project is now back at the state level, and they've gotta put it into their bid letting office, and that can take two and a half-ish, three months for it to work its way through that process. And so, you know, we're at a point, and we talked about this during the last budget discussion, of saying, uh, it's working through the progress process. It will go out to bid, um, you know, depending on when that bid letting and the construction dates are, we're not gonna see the first, um, invoice on that until the next fiscal year. So we've already moved, um, those dollars into the twenty-twenty-one budget, um, but it is working through its path. You know, whenever, I love grant money, um, because it's, it's technically sort of free, uh, but you get a lot of strings attaching, you get a lot of government intervention in it that instead of a project taking one year, it takes three or longer. And sometimes project costs go up too because of it, so it's kind of a blessing, but a curse as well sometimes. So that is, um, still underway, and, um, I should have, hopefully, more updates at the next meeting. But again, the bid letting can take a while in the DOT office, 'cause they gotta get it in the queue with all, everything else that they're putting out to bid.
Good.
So, Bull Run, we've already talked about subdivision stuff, just some, continue to have some rock issues that they're navigating through. And, um, uh, I just wanted to touch on, you know, Travis is working on our low side well. It's running fine. We were worried that it got struck by lightning or something and wasn't functioning. But we went down, we can put it into manual mode and operate it, so it's still filling the towers and whatnot. But for some reason, it's not automatically running. And so, uh, this kinda ties into the SCADA's conversation that we had previously about having a SCADA system that will identify what the problem is, whether it's a communication issue, a power issue, a fuse, you know, whatever. It would be nice to narrow that down a little bit. This one happens to be, um, an electrical issue. Something, uh, I think the pump saver or something went out, uh, probably did its job. You know, but we were worried that it was a communication issue, because if it's not communicating with the main board up at the shop, somebody's gotta go down there and manually turn it on and off, and that might be at midnight or two in the morning, because this time of the year, that's the only time we gain on putting water in the reservoir, because of all the consumption going on. So, um, I'd like to thank Public Works too for, um, taking care of that today. It consumed a, a big portion of their day to make sure that we could get the fix and that we were fine, and we didn't have to engage our emergency well. If we did need to engage that emergency well, we've already flushed that out a couple of weeks ago in preparation of the rally. Uh, so these are kinda things that nobody thinks about it, except for our guys, gets ready. And so we're gonna have enough water. It's just kind of, we never like that to happen on a busy week like this. So, um, and then, uh, last comment is just the rally closure itself. We have, this year, essentially, the three guys that put the, the rally closure out, so it's Travis, Thomas, and Bob, have never put the rally closure up before. And so Travis did a great job of organizing the guys, and the guys did a really good job of, of pulling it together, so I wanna give them kudos and thanks. I, I stopped in first thing Friday after it went up and, um, just noticed a couple little adjustments and nothing major at all, and I think it's working out well, so.
Great. All right. With no further business, meeting adjourned.